Good evening, everyone. Wow, it is awesome to see a full house here. I love this. We need to have an appreciation night every council meeting, I think. We can get a full house like this. This is awesome. So just so you understand of kind of what the routine is for this evening, we actually have two meetings back-to-back. The first is a local planning agency, and unfortunately, we have to do that one first. Otherwise, I would swap them around. But we have to do that one first because the second one is dependent upon that one. So if you'll bear with us, I'm not sure how long it'll take. Hopefully, not too long. And then we'll go right into the second meeting, which is our regular council meeting, and when we'll really get to the items that you're mostly interested in. So with that introduction, if we can please call the roll.
Chair Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Chair Hartman.
Here.
Board Member Albritton.
Present.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Here.
Board Member Kuzinski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Excellent. If you'll please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Item number three, the outdoor lighting ordinance.
This is a resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, making a recommendation that the town council adopt an amendment to the text of the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, ULDC, relating to outdoor lighting, providing for an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second just for you all that are here. So we are looking to amend the lighting ordinance to be more in line with the dark sky ordinance that we want to keep and we want to protect. And this will actually help us to do that. So that's what this item is about. Is there any discussion from the council on this item?
I just want to commend the board for, the Complan Board, for working on this. They did a lot of hard work on this.
They did. They did. Absolutely. Thank you. That's a great comment. Any other comments? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, if we can please call the roll.
Board Member Albritton.
Yes.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Yes.
Board Member Kuzinski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hartman.
Yes.
Chair Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Very good. Item number four, please.
Item four is a resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, recommending that the town council adopt an amendment to section 010-070-110 of the Town of Southwest Ranches, ULDC, pertaining to non-commercial signage and providing for an effective date.
Motion approved. Second.
This is an item that I actually was pushing for from the blast. It used to be, historically, we had an ordinance in place where we could put out our political signs 60 days prior to election day. So it gave time for everybody to get the signs out and get the word out. There was a change to that, and then there was some varying ways to interpret it. And so this last election cycle, as you may have noticed, the signs were out there for almost a year. And it was not something that I think is good for our town. It kind of trashes the town for a whole year. It's too long, in my opinion. So I brought this forth and with, and that's why this item is here for us to talk about. We're going actually to 90 days, so more than the 60, but not where we were. So any further comment?
I just got a question actually for Keith. Does this regulate signs from political candidates that are outside of our town, such as, you know, somebody who's running for state or federal government?
Yeah, under the law, it has to be treated equally across the board. So it's all signs. That's why the header is "All Non-Commercial Signs." So it's all signs.
Got it. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Now, my understanding is that if there's a sign in the swale, that's automatically illegible, correct? And the adoption of this applies exclusively to private properties? Okay. And this is not proactive, correct?
I don't believe it is. I think it's...
I think signs are proactive, but if...
When was that adopted?
Long time ago.
Long time ago.
Because we've always had five issues, and it's never been campaign signs.
There was always six. We just never brought up the signed one.
But I will tell you, if the council determines, which it can at any point, that it does not want to enforce it proactively as it relates to this issue, you can definitely exclude it. There's no prohibition on that.
Just takes a vote of five.
The problem was, when this came up, years and years ago, I wasn't even on the council at that point, was the site triangle. Everybody was trying to grab the front entrance to whatever community was going on, and nobody could see.
Right.
So we made it pro, or not we, but at that time, the council made it proactive. And it just never became a problem after that.
But Councilmember Kuzinski, if you'd like a motion item, a resolution item, brought back for the next meeting on that issue, we can easily do so.
I sure would, because when we were talking about the amendments to the charter last year regarding proactive, I think just about everybody on this dais had said it was five issues. And now I'm being told, I'm being hit with six. And this is a surprise to me, and I'm not really happy about being told that we have a new issue that I'd never even heard about. And every one of us has said it.
I will say this, and I understand where you're coming from, and I don't disagree with you. I will say this, that in my, in the, kind of weird, this is the truth, in back of my mind, I always knew there were six, and we were talking about five. And I always wondered, which one did I lose, to be honest with you? So now I know, this was the one. But to Keith's point, it's very much a valid point that we could look at. I think it makes sense to look at it.
I mean, I'm gonna say in my driving around the town, there's a lot of campaign signs that are still out there.
Still out there.
Yeah.
And I am a firm believer that that's their right to have those signs on that property, even to today. I drive along Dykes Road, my opponent's sign is on a sign. God bless them. Bless them for having that sign out there, because that's their First Amendment right.
I respect your opinion. I disagree with it. I mean, I don't disagree that it's their right, but I think that there's other factors that also weigh in.
Okay. And then I would like, and I'm gonna throw it out there, that the date that you signed the paper with the clerk's office, that I think that should be the date you should be allowed to put your signs out. And I'd like to propose an amendment to that.
And that'd be when in July? But it's usually the second week in July.
Whenever you sit with the clerk and sign the forms and pay the check,
June.
It gives you five months.
Yeah, I think, my personal feeling is, it doesn't take five months. As a matter of fact, the longer it's out there, and I think we all saw that this time, you say there's a lot of signs out there. I know of one that I've seen. I probably drive by all the rest, but I'm so used to seeing them, I don't even see them anymore. And if you put them out there five months ahead of time, you don't even see them after the first two or three months, because it becomes part of the landscape. So I think it's, I think it actually is detrimental to the candidates, and it's definitely detrimental to residents and those that are just, have to put up with those signs for that length of time.
Yeah, I'd argue on David's side, but for a different reason. Basically, once you get your campaign checking account set up, what's the first thing you want to do? You want to start raising money. So most all of us kick it off with a campaign kickoff party, and we're, you know, attracting as many people, as supporters, as we can get. And that's when we start getting checks in, because that's a big part of that. And I mean, in the past two campaigns I've run, I've bought those out of my own money, my own donation to my campaign, and I usually have 100 signs there, and we're handing them out to everybody. The challenge now is, if they put it out in advance, they're in trouble. So there's something there that we really need to communicate to them.
That's true, but I want you, I've been doing campaigns, sad but true, since 2002. Okay? And in every single campaign, I've been restricted to putting it out there 60 days ahead of time. Every single campaign. That's the history of this town, 60 days. It wasn't until this one last campaign that it was a free-for-all, you could just put it out there almost a year in advance. So I think coming back to 90 days is a reasonable compromise.
So given that schedule, when did you generally do your kickoffs? I'm just taking notes.
Oh, kickoff. Well, I mean, it's two different things. Kickoffs for when, I generally did my kickoff right after I qualified, and I would start raising money at that point, but there's a...
You didn't hand out signs.
Did not. And I didn't, I didn't even order my signs till, you know, normally, it was right around September 1st that you would start putting out the signs, and I'd order them around August 1st.
And how many times have you been on the council between mayor and council member? That's why I'm taking notes.
Four or five times. Four or five times.
Good. All right. Thank you.
All right. So on my issue, I feel that I'm gonna make the motion. Somebody's second, and we can discuss it. Whether the date that you can actually put your signs out is the date you qualify. That's my motion.
Is there a second for that motion? Not seeing one. Thank you, David.
Yep.
All right. Any other, any other comments? Yes, Jim?
Mayor, I ran for election in 2020, and it was the town's regulation at that time to put the signs up 60 days prior to. I put them up towards the end of August. This last time here, I spent most of my time going around correcting my signs, fixing them. Those little zip ties that you buy, sitting out in the sun, they break. I'm constantly, I was constantly, constantly fixing them. I spent more time fixing my signs than you can imagine. So, you know, it was labor. It was intense. And, you know, I don't see nothing wrong. 60 days is fine. 90 days is okay. But when you start putting them out in June, when you first sign those papers, I think that's a long ways out.
Thank you. I think the other element of it, we were fortunate it didn't happen, but if we had had a hurricane come through in the middle of summer, you know, August or so, we, anyway.
It's a risk.
Any other comments? Seeing none, any public comments on this item? Seeing none, if we please call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry. Debbie, please, come on up. I'm sorry. I was too quick on the draw.
Debbie Green, 5201 Southwest 199.
I don't think that's on.
Is it on?
It is.
Hello? Okay.
Oh, there we go.
You just gotta get a little closer.
Okay.
I agree 100% with the mayor. I think for all the years, and we've been in Southwest, since we've become a town, we've lived out here since we've become a town. And those 60 days prior to an election is sufficient. It's worked well. I just think having the signs out for almost half the year, it's just, that's not the way you want to look at your town, every two years. It's not like every four years. It's every two years. And I, I mean, my own personal feeling is having those signs out so early, it also affects the residents, not just because you're looking at all this stuff on our pretty green lawns, but it just creates a lot of animosity between residents. There's just been so, there was so much more, and I don't, and I don't know if it's because these sounds are just, the signs are just smack in your face for so long. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Yeah. That's nice.
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. I think 90 days is a reasonable amount. There was a lot of signs that were getting blown around, and everything else went. And needless to say, some of them weren't taken care of. But I think 90 days is adequate. I don't think it needs to be five months. So please go with 90 days. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Any other comments? Seeing none, if we please call the, oh, go ahead, David.
Just reiterating my opposition to proactive on the signs. It's, I really, that's a very personal issue with me. So that's my big concern.
All right. And I think it's a valid one. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Yes.
Board Member Kuzinski.
Yes.
Board Member Albritton.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hartman.
Yes.
Chair Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great. Item number five, please.
Item five is a resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, recommending that the town council adopt an amendment to section 035080 of the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, pertaining to indoor and outdoor assembly in rural and agricultural districts and providing for an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on this item. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, is there any public discussion on the item? Please call the roll.
Board Member Kuzinski.
Yes.
Board Member Albritton.
Yes.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hartman.
Yes.
Chair Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Very good. Item number six is approval of minutes from May 8th of this year for the LPA. Is there any, is there a motion on this item?
Motion approved.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? I'm gonna say that whistle is not related to this meeting? Is there any public additions, corrections to the minutes? I would love to hear what the addition or correction is. That would be awesome. That would be so awesome. All right. We had the smallest hand go up. All right. If we can please call the roll.
Yes.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Yes.
Board Member Kuzinski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hartman.
Yes.
Chair Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Minutes passed.
Thank you.
Motion adjourned.
We're adjourned, and we will go right into our regular meeting. So a call to order our regular Town of Southwest Ranches Town Council meeting, if we can please call the roll.
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Albritton.
Present.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Here.
Councilmember Kuzinski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Excellent. If you'll please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What an awesome evening to see everybody here, and for all good reasons as well. So this is fantastic. Thank you all for coming out, and thank you for the reason why you're here and all that you've done. So with that introduction, we are here. Obviously, the next item is to recognize volunteers for our birthday, 25th birthday event, which was a stunning success. Susan Cuts, thank you, thank you, thank you. You did an amazing job, but I know you will be the first... But I also know that you will be the first one to jump up there and say, you absolutely didn't do it alone. You had a great staff, and you had great volunteers that all made it happen. So let me turn it over to you to begin the recognition.
Yes, we did. We had a lot of really amazing people. Amazing people that helped, and I'd like everybody to know about it, because sometimes it's not seen. Okay. This evening, I would like to take this time to recognize and thank incredible individuals who volunteered their time and energy to make this celebration such a success. Each person involved brought not only their dedication and love for the town, but also wanted to have our residents have a memorable 25th birthday celebration. The residents of Southwest Ranches embraced the tradition of parade day with heartfelt enthusiasm, coming together with families and neighbors to create their own floats. They shared efforts not only encouraged others to join in the fun, but also strengthened the sense of community that made this celebration so special. First, I would like to thank my husband for always standing by my side. His unwavering support and his deep love for this town is a constant source of strength. In alphabetical order, I would like to recognize the following individuals. Rose Albritton. Rose was truly a special, irreplaceable part of this birthday celebration. From the early planning stages to the very last moment, her thoughtful ideas, attention to detail, and creative input helped transform the event. She had a remarkable way of suggesting meaningful touches and always offering words of encouragement. Rose was also always there with grace, warmth, and genuine desire to help. Her love for her community and dedication to making the day special were felt by everyone. Alina Amaral. She's not here tonight. She was an amazing person. She had the pictures on the moving display inside the barn. Even in the midst of her moving and looking for a new home, Alina remained committed and made sure all of the saved photos were rotating and being displayed beautifully on the screen inside the barn. Her dedication ensured our memories could be shared and enjoyed by everyone. It is on a USB. Russell saw them during the week. They are from way back when to current. Chief Bennett. A special moment for me was watching Lee and Karen French on the golf cart, bringing cake from the barn to people under the tent, making sure that even those who preferred to stay in the shade felt included and celebrated. Lee's presence both as chief of Southwest Ranches Volunteer Fire Department and as a neighbor truly embodies the spirit and dedication he and his family holds for Southwest Ranches. Davie Police Department Lieutenant Scott Leon. He coordinated his team to help George Morris with keeping the parade flow safe for residents who were affected by the parade. Davie provided the traffic cones for George to help coordinate and organize the traffic flow. Chad and Gary Snelling. They were operations supervisors for the town of Davie, and they were instrumental in arranging the showmobile, which served as the stage for our entertainment and dignitary presentations. Their support added a professional and polished touch to the celebration. Alexis Benteckert. We sincerely thank you for your dedication and willingness to volunteer your time, which made a difference, and we truly appreciate the effort you contributed to the town hall. May Yuli Benteckert. Your support was truly invaluable throughout the entire process. May Yuli consistently helped me update and made sure that I was on the right track every step of the way. Whether it was sending out emails, managing the number of tents, tables, and chairs, or handling last-minute changes, no matter what came up, she was always there, reliable and ready to help, which made a tremendous difference in keeping everything organized and running smoothly. I am deeply grateful for her dedication and her constant support. Gilbert. He's not here this evening, but when we had the idea to come up to use the tree for parts of the decorations of the tables, he took pieces of the, of the, of whatever was left, and I said, "Let's do them different shapes, different sizes." And he took the time and he did everything. Gilbert cut many various sizes and shapes for our table decorations. Whether I needed help removing Spanish moss from the tree behind the barn or gathering air plants from the trees, Gilbert was always ready to lend a hand. His support meant a great deal to me and made a significant difference in bringing everything together. Cheryl Danner. Whether it was suggesting meaningful details or stepping in to offer support when it was needed, Cheryl played a valuable role in helping plan the town's 25th birthday celebration. Her efforts in establishing our first connections with Davie Police and Fire Rescue were especially important and set the tone for a successful and well-coordinated event. Davie Fire Rescue. They played a vital role in ensuring the safety, success, and community spirit of the celebration. Their presence reminded us of the strong partnership and protection they provide every day. Josh Dykes. Josh Dykes took great care in overseeing the old-time antique stagecoach and the old-fashioned jail, both generously provided by Dennis DeBeau. Is Dennis here? Yes, okay. The owner of Little Critters, Corral in Davie. Dennis spent the day helping move these two massive pieces until they were perfectly placed, had to have them in a certain spot. And thanks to Josh's attention, they were well-cared-for and respected. Residents truly enjoyed these unique antique displays. And I want to thank Dennis. Leo, who is not here this evening. Leo put his full heart and soul into this event, guided by his personal motto, "Always for the residents." He constantly prioritized community connection in every detail. He worked tiresly to ensure the layout of the site plan fostered resident interaction and enjoyment. His new additions, like water slides and inflatables and tents, were added. Leo adopted the plan daily without hesitation. His dedication and flexibility were vital to the event's success. I am personally grateful for his steady support throughout insight and the calm strength he brought to every challenge. Karen French. I don't know if she's here. Karen. Karen, I truly couldn't have done it without you. You were by my side every step of the way, always ready to help, offer support, and keep things moving smoothly. Your calm presence, reliability, and dedication meant the world to me throughout the entire planning process. Knowing I can count on you all made all the difference, and I'm so grateful to have you with me throughout it all. Your steady, supportive, and always willing to help wherever needed, whether it was planning, problem-solving, or just keeping me grounded, Karen was there every step of the way. Her dedication and friendship made all the difference, and I'm so thankful to have her with me during this special event. Taylor Stark, who's not here. Blaine and Sally and my daughter Christine and my husband Donald all generously helped distribute the T-shirts, the fans, the keychains, and programs to attendees, ensuring everyone felt welcomed and ready to enjoy the celebration. A special thanks to each of them for their warm smiles, patience, and energy that they brought to the task. It truly set a positive tone that day. My granddaughter Brooke Hendrick and her boyfriend brought wonderful energy to the inflatable saloon, cheerfully handing out soda and water to attendees. Their friendly smiles and helpful spirit added to the welcoming atmosphere and helped make the day even more enjoyable for everyone. Joanne Hollingsworth. Joanne's truly helped make the cake-cutting moment special by bringing her signature sweetness to the celebration. We're so grateful. She volunteered her time and energy to be part of the day. From the warm, heartfelt conversations she shared with joy, she felt reconnecting with residents she hadn't seen in years. Thank you, Joanne, for your kindness, your beautiful smile, and your spirit. December, who is not here, and we all know, was always by our side, offering help without being asked, solving problems before they even grew, and showing true dedication every step of the way. December's steady presence meant everything ran smoothly and wherever help was needed most. Her support and presence made the lasting difference throughout the event. We all know that. George Morris.
There we go.
George's love for the town runs deep. It's not just something he says, it's something he lives. His passion for supporting community events is seen time and time again, and his dedication never wavers. Being involved and giving back is second nature to him. On Friday, when we faced a last-minute issue with the potable water company, and it looked like that they weren't going to show, George immediately jumped into action. And when the company ultimately backed out, George made sure everything was handled, true to form, always willing to step up and make things right. In addition, George took the lead in organizing all the parking for the event, and thanks to his careful planning and clear communication, it couldn't have run more smoothly. From general parking to ADA accessibility, every detail was thought through and executed with care. Residents were able to arrive with ease, and the flow of traffic remained calm and orderly throughout the day. His behind-the-scenes efforts made a visible difference, and we are so grateful. Lori Morris. Lori took on the task of organizing the trail riders for the parade, handling all the logistics with care and attention to detail that she made sure that the horses and trailers had a safe and accessible place to unload, helping everything run smoothly from the moment they arrived. And thank you for her coordination. Jen. Always happy to lend a hand, Jenny brought her friendly spirit and team-oriented attitude from the very beginning to the end. Her dedication did not go unnoticed, and she stepped in to help whenever she could, contributed as needed while supporting the team's efforts. Catherine. I am personally grateful for Catherine's steady support I am personally grateful for Catherine's steady support and thoughtful insight throughout the planning of the party. Her calm strength and measured approach brought a sense of reassurance whenever challenges arose with grace and clarity, and always had a practical solution that made a meaningful difference. Taylor Stark, who is not here, and I had mentioned that before, she is the one who sang the Star Spangled Banner, and she did an amazing job, as we all know. Kathy Sullivan. Known for her smile that never ends, Kathy truly is a wonderful person whose kindness and generosity shine in everything she does. She's always willing to help no matter the task or challenge, offering her time and energy with a cheerful heart. Kathy's warm spirit and genuine care for others make her not only an amazing team member, but also a cherished friend to all. Her positive attitude and willingness to support those around her bring a sense of comfort and encouragement that uplifts everyone fortunate enough to know her. Madison. Madison did an outstanding job announcing the parade as it made its way into the park. With her joyful smile and upbeat energy, she engaged the crowd and brought a sense of excitement to the event. Her clear and enthusiastic announcements helped highlight each vehicle's arrival, making everyone feel included and connected to the celebration. Madison's genuine enjoyment in her role was evident, and her positive presence added a special touch that enhanced the overall experience for all. Pete. Thank you very much for your generous sponsorship and your support. It truly helped make the town's 25th anniversary a fun and memorable success. Your kindness and involvement have made a real difference, and we're so grateful that you were part of the special celebration. And your family. Your enthusiastic delivery of the water slide rules was an unexpected highlight and brought laughter and smiles to so many, especially to Russell, who is still talking about it right there. A very special thank you to Chris Brownlow, the president of Sunshine Ranches HOA, for going above and beyond to ensure the 25th birthday celebration was well-publicized in the Wagler. Her efforts played a key role in spreading the word and building excitement leading up to the big day. Because of the support that she had given, more residents were informed, engaged, and able to join us in making memories together. We truly appreciate her commitment in helping bring neighbors together. Debbie Green. A heartfelt thank you to Debbie Green, president of the Green Meadows HOA, for her incredible spirit and leadership in bringing the community together. Debbie's enthusiasm was contagious. She not only helped rally residents, but also played a key role in creating a vibrant and spirited community float for the parade. Her efforts brought neighbors together in such a meaningful way, encouraging participation and excitement across Green Meadows and beyond. Thanks to Debbie, the parade felt even more connected and festive, truly reflecting the unity and the pride of our town. We celebrate and appreciate all that you did to make that day so special. Saying thank you to all the staff is easy, but truly, each department played a meaningful role in helping me learn to grow throughout this process, from executive, public works, finance, procurement, clerk's office, pros, and our contractors, building department, code, and zoning. I would like to thank Tommy, our general services manager, for being there for me when a hug was needed and the message board was put up when we needed it as a means of the communication for reaching out to Rolling Oaks residents. Tommy made sure that the message board was in place, letting residents know that there could be traffic delays because of the parade. Thank you Rod and Joyce for being such a valuable part of sharing vendor contracts and suggestions that help guide our sponsorship outreach. Your insight into which vendors the town has successfully worked with made a huge difference. Because of your help, I was able to connect with trusted partners and open the door to sponsorship opportunities that help bring our event to life. I truly appreciate your time and continued support, also in helping choose the Shane Duncan Band for the party. Danielle, thank you for your warm smile and willingness to help, especially during moments when I needed Russell, but he was tied up. Truly meant a lot. You never made me feel like I was interrupting, and your patience and professionalism never went unnoticed. It's all those small thoughtful moments that made a big difference. Emil. Thank you for patiently explaining the process to me and helping me understand, step by step, clearly. Catherine, your gentle soul and kindness have been constant comfort throughout this journey. Christina, I appreciate you taking the time to walk me through the purchase order process so thoroughly. Arianna, thank you for guiding me through my check repress with such patience and care and showing me the right way. Rich, always checking my dots and helping me cross my Ts, keeping me abreast of the budget revenues, donations, deposits, and budget expenses. Debbie, Dan, and Jennifer, adding party flyers to the optisigns at the front desk, social media, and to the website was very helpful to me and to having the residents see when they came into the front. Thank you Julio Manford, Ishmel Concepcion, and Gigi for any permit-related questions I might have had during this time. Hector and Angelie, thank you for your warm, friendly information given out to residents when calling about the party. To all departments, your time, patience, and willingness to share your knowledge made a real difference, and I'm deeply grateful for the teamwork and the collaboration. Emily. My grateful appreciation and heartfelt gratitude to Emily, my supervisor, for her unwavering support, guidance, and encouragement throughout this journey. Her dedication to me gives me a true source of strength and inspiration. I am incredibly grateful for everything that she has done to help me succeed. I was especially wonderful to see her daughter Ava excited about the party, delighted that she had her face painted by one of the vendors, and fully enjoyed the celebration. Russell. I want to sincerely thank you for the incredible opportunity you gave me. It has truly meant the world to me, and I am deeply grateful that you have placed your trust and confidence in me, that faith became my greatest motivation, pushing me to pour my heart into every detail. I genuinely loved every step of the journey, from the initial planning stages and creative discussions to seeing every detail fall beautifully into place, to the final moments where everything came together in a meaningful way for our residents. Watching our ideas come to life and seeing the joy that it brought to the community was beyond rewarding. This experience will always hold a special place in my heart, and so thankful to have been part of something so special. So as we close out the town of Southwest Ranches 25th birthday celebration, let's look forward to many more years and future celebrations ahead.
All right, I think we need a huge picture up front. Everybody, all the volunteers, please come on up front.
You gonna stay up on podium?
All right, well, we'll stay up. Yeah, we'll stay up here. Come on up, come on up.
We'll never get seen.
Come around. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chief Coe.
Thank you.
Can't see.
Not that time.
Well, now Bob has to get in the picture.
Yeah.
Damn. What's this?
That's right.
I enjoyed it.
Yeah, you're always blocking it.
And Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, David.
I'd just like to make a financial request for one of Lamborghinis for me. I really enjoyed it.
That was nice driving, I gotta admit, I gotta admit.
Couldn't keep it, though.
Yeah, no. I was joking with him, I says, "I bet this is the slowest Lamborghini's ever gone."
Exactly. Exactly.
We have certificate of appreciations to hand out.
In the microphone, Susan.
We have certificate of appreciations to hand out. Rose, Paul Britton. Alina Amaral, she's not here, though, but I'll hold it for her. Chief.
Chief Penny. Folks, while Susan's handing out the photos we took, I'll put them up on my website. Susan will have a link if you'd like a copy of a picture, feel free to load them down, they're free.
Alexis Benteckert. Mayuli.
Stepping up, George, thank you.
Gilbert, he's not here. Cheryl. Davie Fire Rescue. Davie Police. Josh. Karen. Leo's not here. Joanne Hollingsworth. Chris is not here. Danny. December. Jen. George who?
Still volunteering.
Lori. Dylan is not here. Catherine. Oh, okay. Sally's not here. Taylor's not here. Kathy. You want to give it to Kathy Madison? Chief Penny, they did another one for him, too. This is South Florida. Okay. Laura Horns not here, Maggie didn't come. Okay. Caitlin Meehan. Did I miss anybody? These are some of these for the volunteer, for you two, for scholarship, or any of these for the scholarships?
All right. Thank you, Susan. Thank you for all that you did, and thank you for coordinating tonight. It was awesome. Thank you, all the volunteers. It was truly a very, very special day in the life of our town, and the reason why it was special, because of all that you all did. So, thank you so much. And I sold, we were joking with Susan, she got 15 minutes off, and now it's starting to plan our 30th, so here we go. Yep, thank you all. All right. This is also a very special evening for another reason, that the Education Committee, you know, does a number of fundraising events, all to put together a scholarship fund for our students that do work, and they all do community service. And Jennifer's here to kind of kick that off and get us going, so thank you, Jennifer.
I want to see all your smiling faces here.
So, yeah. Hey, Jennifer, can I interrupt just for, just for a second? We have to do another quick presentation here related to this. Russell, why don't you can do the introductions?
Yes, I'd like to call up the Sikh Youth Association. They, every year, help out with some events in the town, and one of the big events that they always help us with is the Unity and Diversity 5K, which is a very strong supporter of the town's college scholarship fund, so I'd like to call the Sikh Youth Association up. The students.
Good evening, everyone. We're honored to be here tonight on behalf of the Sikh Youth Association of South Florida, following the success of our 7th annual Unity in Diversity 5K, an event that brought the community together in celebration of unity, culture, and service. Thanks to the support of this amazing town and its residents, we're proud to present a donation of $7,000 to the town of Southwest Ranches College Scholarship Fund. We want to begin by sincerely thanking Mayor Bright Cruz, Russell Moniz, Deborah Rezga, Dan Stewart, and the entire town council and staff. Your ongoing support, collaboration, and encouragement truly powered the success of this event. Your dedication to the youth of this community does not go unnoticed.
To the residents of Southwest Ranches, thank you for always showing up and showing out. The spirit of unity that this town brings year after year is what gives this event its name and meaning. This isn't just a 5K, it's a celebration of togetherness, diversity, and shared purpose. In celebration of our partnership with the town and in honor of Southwest Ranches' 25th anniversary, we're also proud to contribute $500 towards the town's official birthday celebration. It's a small gesture of appreciation for all the ways this town continues to support our youth and our mission.
As members of the Sikh Youth Association, we also want to speak candidly about the effort that goes into putting, that goes into bringing this event to life. Our team spends months planning, coordinating, and working through the details to make sure every part of this day is meaningful and impactful. It takes real time, energy, and commitment, but what makes it all worth it is the unwavering support we receive from the town. Your partnership is not just helpful, it's essential. It allows us to turn our vision into something real and lasting. Tonight, we're especially proud that these efforts are going towards something so meaningful, the town's college scholarship fund. To the scholarship recipients here with us tonight, congratulations. We are so proud to support your journey and excited to see all that you will achieve. Thank you again to the town, its leaders, and its residents. We're grateful for your trust and the honor, and honored to keep building this tradition together. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Awesome, thank you so much. Yeah, yeah, we'll come down and take a picture.
Sure. That's what Photoshop is for.
Well, good evening again. You got me? There we go. Good evening again, my name is Jennifer Montgomery. I'm honored to be able to serve as the Chair of the Scholarship and Education Advisory Board this year. The board, hopefully, a lot of you know, um, we represent the town's children's interest with the School Board of Broward County, but one of the most important things that we have the privilege of doing is raising funds to promote education, um, through scholarships. So, this year, we had an amazing year, we had a lot of things that, um, kind of came up that were a little unexpected, but it all ended up that we raised a record amount of money this year towards a scholarship, and that is, um, due in a large part to everybody in this room. The events that we did, we just heard about the 5K, um, a significant portion of our, um, scholarship money came from that. The flocking, which thank you to the Southwest Ranches, um, Women's Group who helped us with that, as well as our volunteers, um, and our board, and also the barn dance, which hopefully a lot of you had an opportunity to attend. So that's where the majority of this, these funds are raised. But I want to make sure that you understand that this scholarship, it comes to these kids because they invest back in their community. They spend 40 hours volunteering in the town of Southwest Ranches, um, at events like the fat, excuse me, the 5K, or the flocking, or the barn dance, or the birthday, hopefully some of them got their hours for next year. It's never too early to start. So, these kids have invested their time, their effort, and their energy back into our town, and we want to show them that when you invest in your community, your community invests in you. So, with that being said, I want to, um, recognize these, all these wonderful students, um, they all qualified, they all did their hours, and they've all been a wonderful part of this town. So, one more little, um, tidbit, why I have some of these scholarship recipients here. We talked about the 40 hours, I just want to give you a little heads up, that next year, um, there is going to be, um, an additional scholarship for one recipient for who does the most volunteer hours, um, within the town. So, um, we're gonna have an additional level of recognition, um, next year, so, start early, start now, we got plenty of opportunities, so. Anything I missed? No? All right. What we'll do is, we'll go ahead, we can, um, do individual pictures, I have the ginorm, oh, huh, I forgot one thing, guess how much money it is? We had 27 or 28, 27 recipients of the scholarship this year, a new record, so. And the best part, and just so you guys know, towns like Weston, or Pembroke Pines, or Davie, they hand out maybe one or two scholarships for like a thousand bucks, or 1,500 bucks. We have 27 students tonight, today, who are receiving a scholarship from the town of Southwest Ranches for $1,850 apiece. Well, we'll, you guys can, uh, take pictures with this check afterwards, but we'll, um, try to run through this, because I know you all would like to eat. Okay. One at a time. All right. Alexis Christensen. I don't know who's here and who's not, so.
If you're here, David, you come up, please come up, stand right here, and we'll get a picture of you with, uh...
I went out of order. Alexis Bento Court. Allison Contreras.
Come around this side, come on around this side. Over here, over here. You hand it to her, and we'll get a great shot.
I am not a professional. All right. Macy De Alessandro. Alice, Alex Iskara. Michaela Freeman. Michaela here? No, Michaela? Nicholas Flack. Catherine Garner. Catherine? Macy Garner. Guessing Catherine's not here, Macy's not here? Savannah Gardner. They're on vacation. Andrew Haas. Catherine Hernandez. Savannah Hodgers. Jenna Eitn. Jenna Kipple. Julia Kipple. Madison Crofts. Accepting on behalf. Megan Laffey. Peyton Lookie. Lowkey, sorry. Caitlin Mina. Alyssa Malcon. Alexandra Montgomery. Sophia Morales. Michaela Prokovic. Sorry. Lauren Ribero or Cabero? Ribiero, thank you. Lauren? That's good, they had, I butchered her names, so. Parnitzing. And last but not least, who's not here? Madison Sullivan. Picture with everyone?
Sure.
Yep. Come on, come back.
Please, please, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Don't make the move.
Migo. My miho. Over here, miho.
I'm here.
You guys can kind of squeeze in, you know the drill, turn a little bit to the side, and kind of turn in, good, good. Keith, you're photo bombing.
Oh, we need the check, whoa, 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 whoa.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. All right, on the count of three, say "check". All right, big smiles, everybody. Bigger smiles.
Bigger checks.
You're standing, that's a bad sign.
Do we have a rule must be present to win?
Well, Jenna, I, I can spin, uh, St. Kitts.
Oh, really? Oh, that's cool. Yeah, absolutely. All the way to St. Kitts.
I can't, I'm out of town tomorrow.
Hi.
Yeah, I never heard back, I never heard back.
Congratulations, congratulations.
That's all right, yeah, no, I'm, I'm actually, I'm actually driving out of town as soon as the meeting's over. Yeah, we could do it Monday. Oh, no, let me think, let me think, yeah, I'll be back on Monday.
Since Jenna Eitn's not here, um, I'd like to have a travel expenditure, deliver the check to her at St. Kitts.
And I'll carry the check.
Can't help but try it, man.
Oh, wow.
Green Meadows, huh? It's a lovely place to live out here. Wow, by birth?
All right, all right. Well, I feel like we just should adjourn the meeting, I mean, it doesn't get any better than that, right?
Second.
Doesn't, doesn't get any better, I said, I feel like, but, uh...
Mayor, the, the good news is there is no public comment, so you're right onto board report.
All right, all right, we're good. Well, we do have some...
No form, you snooze, you lose.
Okay, all right, let me, let me just, uh, let's go ahead and, uh, we'll get the meeting going again, we will open up to public comment. Yes, Debbie, what do we got?
I just want to thank Susan for all her kind words, but I also want to thank all the residents and our volunteers in Country Estates. We love Green Meadows.
But we are not Green Meadows.
We had a tremendous amount of, of residents in Country Estates that volunteered their time, volunteered trailers, drove trailers, decorated, landscaping on the trailer, all the different parts, so I just want to make sure everybody in Country Estates feels the love and all the thank yous.
Thank you.
Deb, I was at all your meetings, and I took all those secrets back, and still got credit, see?
All right, um, board reports, do we have any board reports this evening? Seeing none, council member comments.
I'll go.
All right, thank you, Gary.
Start this off, I'll be really quick, um, just going to, uh, mention a few things, and then, want to talk about something at the end. First off, I would like to correct, uh, some misconceptions that are occurring on, uh, social media concerning the Green Meadow Sanctuary. One is the town-owned property that has the carnival on it, and the farmer's market is only five acres, it's not more than that. The, uh, bathroom situation that we're creating right now, that we're permitting and has hit, uh, our Facebook page and all of that, that's part of our grant obligations, people seem to think that we want, we want to keep it, uh, plain and flat and do nothing to it, well, unfortunately, we can't do that because we've been obligated, when we, when we purchased the property through, uh, the Florida Grant System, that we have to put, uh, certain amenities on that, and that's one of them, uh, going on that. So I just wanted to clear that up, uh, for those and people listening. Item of note, Hazmat at the Barn is on the 12th of July, bring all your, uh, paper shredding, uh, pharmaceuticals that you no longer need, and any electronics, uh, fluorescent bulbs, whatever, motor oil, what have you, um, it's real easy, drive-through, they take it right out of your, out of your trunk, or out of the back of your pickup truck, you never even have to get out of the car if you don't want to, or truck, so that's always good. Uh, we have the Bingo at the Barn on the 27th of September. Tickets are available at the, uh, front desk, um, throughout, between now and then, so get them early before they sell out. Uh, we have a photo contest from the, by the Rural Arts Board. The photos need to be submitted by the, uh, 9th of September, 9/9/25, and it's, the theme is enjoying our town, so. We're losing the DMV, uh, mobile DMV that comes out here once a month, they're going through a, a transition, and we don't know what iteration is going to come. There may be a possibility that we may get it in July, it's, it's a, we are getting it in July. If you need to use it, make the, make it now, make, make your appointment now with Deborah, um, or else you're going to get maxed out, on that, because it is one of the best conveniences that Broward County provided for us, is right here in this building, and in the dais, and they take care of it. The last item I want to talk about, um, is not a, uh, information item, we talked about, uh, I've talked about it, and Steve's talked about it, for, Mayor, sorry, uh, for, for months, on the, um, illegal businesses that are operating in town, and, and I've asked, uh, we got, uh, the legal department to draft up some, uh, guidelines, you know, guardrails, that we can all op, operate under, you know, like that, and, um, I'd like to really hear the residents' input, I'd love to turn it over to the comp board. And I kind of needed you guys to agree with me, if, uh, that's a good idea, and let them, let them have it for 90 days, 120 days, whatever time they need. Give us their recommendations, let them take it apart, put it back together, and give us, uh, give us something out of that. Are you guys okay with that?
100%.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion on that? I did, I said 90 to 120. Okay, uh, what's, what do you guys think?
I think 90 days is fine.
90 days is fine, then, three months, you know, so we'll start, start in July.
Are they, let me ask a question, though, are they meeting in July? A lot of, a lot of boards canceled July.
I think they canceled it for, for July, I think, I believe they might have canceled it for July. Let me look at the schedule real quick.
Lou, you're on that board, do you know if we're meeting or not? Okay, so I think we are meeting in July, so I think we're fine with 90 days.
Okay. So, we keep, we keep it at the 90-day mark, and, uh, let them, you know, ad nauseam argue back and forth with the whole, the whole thing, and, uh, go forward from there. So, that's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you, Gary. Would you like to go next, yeah?
I'll go quick.
Thank you.
So, um, everybody's probably aware that the Florida Legislature ended session last week, and, uh, I put together some highlights of the 2025 laws. Fortunately, few of them really impact the town, but, uh, they introduced over 100 bills in various sectors, including education, public safety, public health, healthcare, in the environment, and infrastructure. Most of the laws are aiming to enhance public welfare, streamlining government operations, addressing emerging societal needs, and the main themes were... And the main themes were school safety, environmental conservation, uh, digital governance, uh, healthcare access, and also some criminal justice reform. I'll just highlight some of the things in the various areas. In education, they now are going to require mandatory CPR and, and disability awareness. They're also going to require those AED devices that you see in most places. We don't have them in schools. So they're going to be required. They're also going to put cellphone restrictions on K through eight. So that's a good thing for anybody who's, anybody who's got a cellphone probably should put it down, but they're going to have to put it down in school. Uh, there's also, uh, new support for dropout recovery. In other words, kids that drop out, getting them back in school and then they're, uh, they're beefing up the career education programs. And for the kids that are still outside, they are expanding eligibility for the Bright Futures scholarships. In terms of public safety, and there's some real important ones here, there's some new crimes that have been defined. In Florida, we didn't have a law against swatting. They now have a law against swatting, impersonating rideshare drivers. Some guy can't pull up and say he's an Uber driver and take you for a ride, so to speak. They, that's, that's a felony now. Uh, and then as well, they changed the laws. If you go over a hundred miles an hour in your car, don't matter where, it could be on David Street or it could be on I-75, it's now a felony and the police can immediately take you to jail. Uh, they've also put stricter penalties on fentanyl-related offenses and animal cruelty. There's a new law that they're creating an animal cruelty database. So if you get nailed for cockfighting or dogfighting or abusing animals in any way, and I don't know what the definition of that abuse, it could be leaving them outside without water, you go into a database. Now, where that goes from there, I'm not sure yet. I don't think that's been defined, but you'll be tracked. Um, they're also putting enhanced benefits and protections for law enforcement officers. They're going to have healthcare now for law enforcement officers that can't work anymore that are injured in the line of duty. Right now, I guess, once you're off the police force, that goes away, so they're, they're going to, uh, enhance that. Also, there, you know how we have silver alerts and amber alerts for seniors and for, for children? I don't know what they're going to call it yet, but they're going to have a spectrum alert and that's for people on the autism spectrum. We know somebody, the child walks away regularly and, you know, the police get called, et cetera. So this will be like the kidnapped children on the amber alerts. If, if you see that, that means somebody, somebody's child has walked away. Um, they're going to, in terms of healthcare and human services, mandatory fentanyl testing in all overdose cases, that's probably long time overdue. They're going to do some new, require newborn screening for particular types of muscular dystrophy now as well that normally don't show up. Uh, they're also going to require diabetes care in schools. Schools right now are not equipped to handle a child that has, uh, a hypoglycemic attack. The school administration now is going to have the capabilities to give an insulin shot, or it's called gluco, gluco, gluco something, um, that, uh, will be available for them to basically rescue kids that, or I guess it could be staff as well that go into diabetic shock. And then, um, let's see, just a couple of other key areas in terms of the environment and statewide infrastructure. Do you remember last year they were talking about putting golf courses in hotels in our state parks all over the state? The legislature got that that was a bad idea and now they are prioritizing for conservation-based recreation, which makes a lot more state, uh, sense in our beautiful state parks. Uh, they're also going to simplify, and this could affect us, simplify permitting for fire alarm systems and doesn't affect us yet, but may someday sewer upgrades if, if the town needs to do it or if there's residential sewer changes. Um, as well, they're, they're talking about some things for, for housing and property. We don't really have an affordable, uh, housing situation here in town, but they're reforming the laws on that. Uh, there is something that, I, hopefully it doesn't affect us very often. Is Eddie still here? You'll be able to remove squatters from commercial properties as well. It's not just going to be limited to residential. Uh, going on to digital, they're going to, and this is probably helpful for Keith. They're now going to have electronic court orders and tenant notices. In other words, if somebody is, you're foreclosing, that digital notification is going to be legal. I guess that never has been. Um, they're also looking to reg- regulate cryptocurrencies and digital assets. So I don't know where that's going personally. I won't even comment on it. Uh, they're also going to make some highway changes. They're going to additionally, uh, honor public figures and fallen officers by naming the highways. As you know, in living here in Florida, there's tons of, uh, roads that are named after people. They're going to continue on that. Um, they're also, well, we don't care about the seaports and airports. Uh, they are going to put some consumer protections in place, new laws that are addressing medical debt and insurance claims practices. Uh, they're also going to have protections against unauthorized restaurant reservations and deceptive advertising. So it's good. These are all, for the most part, all, you know, consumer-based, resident-based. It's for the good of the people. I didn't really see much out there like they generally do to protect businesses and large business operations. Uh, there are some, uh, um, interesting ones. They're going to have a fentanyl awareness day. Hopefully, yeah, that's going to be on August the 21st. They're going to have, as I mentioned, spectrum awareness. And some of the more controversial, they're now going to allow the death penalty to be carried out using any method not deemed unconstitutional, such as firing squads and lethal gas. Here's one that, uh, just amazes me. Prohibit the use of chemical or substances to modify weather, including geoengineering techniques like cloud seeding. I guess they have to have a law for everybody. But in any case, oh, there is one that, uh, really doesn't affect the town at this point, but from what I understand in talking to the people in Davie and in Cooper City, they're no longer going to be allowed to fluoridate the water. Now, when I read that, next time I went to Publix, take, read the label on your toothpaste. I couldn't find one toothpaste that didn't have fluoride on it. So for whatever the reasons, they're taking fluoride out of the water, but they're leaving it in the toothpaste. So there's also some changes that are, that don't affect us, but affect the farming community in terms of building farm housing in residential areas and things like that. It's all interesting stuff. I'll probably put a, a little bit more in-depth recap in the next town newsletter. But, uh, I just wanted to give you an overview. No major concerns for the town. I had Keith read this really long ordinance. It was like a hundred pages for him to come back and say, doesn't affect us, because that was really the major farm ordinance. Thank you, Keith. Honorable mention. But in any case, from our perspective here on the council, what the legislature does is they lob us unfunded mandates every few years. I couldn't find anything like that. That was my real reason to look at all this. But anyway, that's all I've got this evening. Thank you. And thank you to all the volunteers for all the help you guys gave us for the, the anniversary party. I can't wait to the, the 50th and the 75th and the 100th. I'll be there in spirit, maybe. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Bob.
David? All right, thank, hello, okay. Thank you, folks, for coming out. I want to thank everybody that stuck around. I want to thank you that, uh, helped with the 25th birthday thing. You guys did a real, real bang-up job. It was amazing. It was beautiful. What was really interesting is, uh, when we got to the stage, you saw each side of the stage, you saw palm trees from Zito Landscaping. It's one of my neighbors. While we were going through the, um, presentation of the awards, I got a text from John. He's riding, he rides his bicycle in the evenings. And he said, "He spotted an alligator at Sterling and Hancock." So, folks, the alligators are out and I guess it's breeding season right around that time. Um, remind you, folks, that the, uh, hotline to call, uh, for them to capture an alligator is 866-392-4286. That's 866-392-4286. Um, and Bob told me that there are some alligators coming off of Griffin now too as well, so. Uh, second issue next week, 4th of July, that brings fireworks. Um, not my favorite topic, but, um, Davie Police will be having a fireworks hotline, which will be, um, in effect beginning at 7:00 PM on July 3rd through 7:00 PM July 6th, Sunday. So that's, uh, July 3rd through the 6th. The number, and I'm going to say it twice, 954-693-8119. 954-693-8119. Little touch on solid waste. I notice I walk, I walk my dog, uh, frequently and I noticed two neighbors in Sunshine Ranches. One of them had mountains of plain cardboard thrown out in bulk. And I was, I was just like, nobody's reading about recycling. This is just going to go to landfill and I'm just, ah, drives me a little crazy. And then the other issue is another neighbor was throwing fluorescent light tubes out in bulk. And when I went back by there today, um, I was going to stop and pick them up and just carry them home so I can take them to, um, Hazmat, but they were gone. Um, recently, Sunshine Ranches HOA, um, approved. Let me back up before I get to that. Um, there was, been excessive speeding reporting on Luray Road, 800 vehicles, um, a day. And half of those vehicles were speeding based on the data that we had. And based on that, Sunshine Ranches HOA, um, passed a, a resolution asking the town to put in speed tables on that road. I want residents on that Luray Road area, if you have an issue with that, call me. I really want to know people's opinions about this. My cellphone is 305-815-0990. Call me. I really need to hear about, uh, residents on their position on this, uh, speed tables on, uh, Luray Road.
David, you might want to mention that speed tables are a lot more horse trailer friendly than a speed bump.
Yeah, um, yeah, well, during the, um, HOA meeting the other night, Steve had brought up the issue that, uh, speed tables are much more friendly to horse trails, or trailers. Um, because they're not the big lump. They, um, they're longer and they allow, they don't start going down until the back tires are actually up. So it, it, uh, it's less burdensome on your vehicle, less of a, a bounce on your vehicle, but it does make you slow down. Um, there's one that I've been across. Um, if you go out Sterling Road to the Orion Gas Station, cut through it, uh, and take a right, you will come right upon one of these speed tables right in the middle of the road. They're, they're really nice. They're black, hard, hard rubber. They bolt down to the street. And, um, they're high, they're really highlighted out that you cannot miss seeing them. They're really, really bright about that. Uh, last, let me go back to this because I brought it up on my phone and my phone timed out. Uh, June 18th, one of the residents, Sunshine Ranches, Brian Reynolds, um, and Jim actually spoke with, uh, Bri- uh, Brian, uh, not too long ago. Brian Reynolds passed away on June 18th. He, uh, served in the United States Air Force, uh, Clark Air Force Base in the Philippines. And, um, he married our friend Cherry Reynolds, uh, in 1977. Uh, in 1996, Brian was president of Sunshine Ranches HOA. Uh, he passed away at Cleveland Clinic. Uh, Brian is survived by his wife Cherry, his three sons, Jay, Junior, Lily, and their children Kara, Catalina, and Logan. Uh, Chris and Tiara with their son Christopher Tate and his third son Derek. Uh, Brian was a loving and caring husband and father who always seemed to put his family before himself. Uh, in lieu of flowers, the family has asked that donations be made to the University of Miami Sylvester Comprehensive Cancer Center. So please keep, uh, the Reynolds family in your thoughts. Uh, it's a hard time for them right now. That does it for me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, David. Appreciate that. Yeah, Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. David, you're right. I did have a chance to speak to Brian, probably three weeks before his passing. He had a contractor at his house that I wanted to get to know, so I went over and talked. I met Brian and his wife Cher, uh, back in 2020. They supported my campaign, put up a sign, and again in 2024, they put up a sign. In talking to him, we reminisced, I don't know if most of y'all understand, that his wife was, uh, overseas also. She served in Iraq and Iran and different places. He served, like you said, in the Philippines as a medic during the, uh, Vietnam War. And I didn't hold it against him, but he was in the air force and I was in the army, so, you know, but we got along. I didn't hold it against him. But it is a shame that someone like that, uh, passed away. A great person for the community, served, like you said, as president in 1996 for the Homeowners Association and, you know, so keep the family in, in, uh, in their prayers. On the 18th also of this month, we dedicated our new attack truck, brand new, spit-shined and ready to go. Uh, we've got pictures of that coming up and all. And Chief, take care of that truck. Uh, you've got something now that everybody can drive, not just a few. It's automatic, all right? The other truck, the other truck, they tore it up. They tore that transmission up all the time, constant repairs, but now they got something everybody can drive, which is good, you know? The state, uh, said to the counties that you need to get stricter on your school zone speeding. So Broward County just came up with a new ordinance which cracks down on speeding in school zones. They are going to get really nasty if you go 10 mile an hour over the speed limit. They're going to write you up. They're going to, they're starting to crack down. There's been some accidents up around Dillard High School where some kids have been hit. So I'm glad to see that this is taking place. And as you know, our Safety and Traffic Board, we approved a guardrail system to go up at this, uh, bus stop on Dykes. It's at 53rd and Dykes. The students were standing right next to Dykes Road. The bus was there. They were standing right next to the road. Traffic coming through there speeding. I mean, they're flying through there. I had the school board representative, Ms. Thompson, there at 5, 6 o'clock in the morning and the cars coming through there, you would think that, uh, that it was a runway or something, the way they were flying. So the guardrails are going up. In addition to the guardrails, we had a, one of the signs, one of the speed limit signs, and on that it'll say school zone. So that'll help them slow down. Uh, you know, we got to do everything we can to protect the students. So when that dedication comes through, you know, we'll take some pictures and have people there to do it. The state budget, uh, I think most of y'all know that we have a great representative, Ms. Bartman, up in Tallahassee for us. And she sent us some of the things that they're working with. They're on the governor's desk. Now, whether or not they, he signs them, but they're on the governor's desk. Mathis Boulevard Improvement, $442,000. The Southwest Ranches Fire Station, $900,000, and the Dykes Road improvements at $405,000. These are grants that are given to us. Doesn't cost the taxpayers any money. Uh, but, you know, under these grants, we have obligations that we have to do, just like Gary was mentioning earlier about the park, that grant to build a bathroom and so forth, we have to do. So this is what's happening in town and, uh, just be safe for the 4th of July. Remember, you do have to have a permit if you're going to shoot off fireworks. So it may get, it's two weeks ahead of time. I know there's a period of time ahead of time that you have to apply for the permit. So if you're going to shoot off the fireworks or whatever, get that permit, but be respectful of your neighbors, be respectful of the animals around and stuff. And, and just have a great 4th of July. And Ms. Susan, thank you for everything. What a tremendous 25th birthday. I'll be here for the 50th, all right? But thank you so much and thank you to all the volunteers. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Jim. Um, I'm just going to touch on a, a few quick items, I think. Um, I wanted to, uh, you may have heard, it's come up in some of the meetings and, um, around town, and I've gotten a number of calls on it, so I thought I would bring it up. The, uh, this, uh, item that, uh, actually the state and the country is working on, the alligator Alcatraz. You may have heard about it. And, um, so I just wanted to bring that up just to let you know what I know. And basically, yes, it is happening. It is underway. Um, it's not super close to us, but it's close enough that we want to keep an eye on it. It's actually not off, um, Alligator Alley. It's actually off, uh, 41 Tamiami Trail, about halfway in the middle of the Everglades, if, uh, you're familiar. If you've been in Florida a long time, you're familiar with this piece of property. Used to be called the Jet Port when they were going to make it the, uh, the huge metro hub for both, uh, the east and the west coast of Florida. Didn't, no, I guess, pun intended, it didn't get off the ground. Um, but, uh, but, uh, there isn't, there is a runway out there. It's paved and they're going to take advantage of that. So we'll, we'll keep an eye on that, um, and, uh, and keep updates as that, as that moves along. Um, I wanted to give a quick update of the South Florida Wildlife Center. Um, it's moving along nicely. Appreciate everybody's work on that. Keith has been very helpful. Um, Russell's been very helpful. We've really been working that with the, uh, the school board. I've been meeting with a number of the school board members, um, making sure that they're still very excited about it. And I'm pleased to report that they are very excited about it. And, uh, also the, uh, the Wildlife Board themselves is very excited. They're, they're thrilled. They, they went community to community, community, and it was all like, eh, I don't really want you here. And so we've really welcomed them with open arms. I think it's going to be a tremendous, you know, unified. gonna be a tremendous, um, you know, unified, uh, what, what they do and what we do is, is so similar and so aligned, that'll be fantastic. So, um, it looks like we're going to get our, our lease in front of the board on, in the August meeting, which is on August 19th, and so, um, looking forward to that very much. I was hoping to get July, but doesn't look like that's gonna work, but that's okay, we're, August is, August is the last month we can do it, so, um, we need to make it happen, but I feel very comfortable that the school board members are excited about it, they will make sure it gets happen, it happens as well. So, um, really excited about that, I think that's gonna be a step forward in the right direction. And then the last thing, uh, just the SWA, the Solid Waste Authority, um, just a quick update on that, we're continuing to have these meetings, the public outreach meetings, we've done an amazing job of getting folks out there. Debbie, thank you for your coordination on that. Uh, Harold has been very helpful as well, and I just want to really, uh, really just praise this town, because we are now well-known, I can guarantee you, we are well-known throughout Broward County as folks who take it seriously. Um, what we, what, we don't just talk about, we don't want an incinerator, we also talk about the things we're doing for composting, for, um, recycling, for all of those things that are moving us more and more and more, step by step closer to zero waste. And so it's, it's very exciting to see, and frankly, it's heartwarming to see, um, that we are being put in a whole different category, um, we're not just saying, "No incinerator," we're saying yes to what we can do instead of that. Um, don't just say what you don't want, tell us what you can do to make a difference. And so, um, if you have not yet signed up for the composting, we still have, uh, a good number of slots that are still open for that, it's free to residents, and, uh, we really wanna kick this off in a big way so that we get, uh, more and more involved for it. It's the right thing to do, and, um, it'll build some good habits, so I encourage folks, if, if you have not already signed up for that, and if you'd like to, you can go right to our website, scroll down to the bottom, you'll see a little tile there called "Hot Topics," you click on that, and you'll see like the second or third item down, uh, from there is to sign up for it. So we are doing that, we're gonna have the, uh, the introduction and kind of the overview of it on this Saturday morning at 10 o'clock here at Town Hall. If you're thinking about signing up and not sure about it, come out for that, and, um, I'll see you there, I'll be there, so looking forward to that. Alright, uh, Keith, any legal comments tonight?
Uh, no, I just wanted to congratulate Susan, as everyone else had mentioned, for your spectacular job on the event, I look forward to, uh, the 50th. Um, I know he left, but I saw George Morris was standing outside, I don't know if he can hear me, but I do wanna thank him also, my cardiologist wanted to thank him for allowing me to move the Italian ice machine with him, um, the, uh, the two miles to the designated location, because the one closest to the parking lot was not good enough for the Italian ice machine, so, uh, uh, thank you for that, uh, I really, uh, needed that and felt it the next day. Um, other than that, no further, uh, comments, but thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Russell?
Yes, Mayor, just a few things, um, we're happy to report that we have 55 people actually signed up for the, uh, Residential Composting Pilot Program. I did want to also just, um, clarify that the meeting on Saturday at 10 is a, a virtual meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's virtual, it's not in person.
Okay.
Um, we are looking for more people, we had, uh, initially a, a slot for 100 people, so we have 45 slots available. Uh, the first, uh, collection will begin on Monday, July 14th, so we're really excited that we've passed that 50% threshold. Uh, that's one thing, um, Councilmember Kozinski mentioned the, um, the fireworks and the hotlines, I appreciate that he did that. We also have requested a few signs, uh, from Davie Police to erect around town, to basically just kind of ask people to be mindful of their neighbors with, uh, agricultural livestock, um, to be, you know, cognizant of that if they're gonna be shooting off fireworks. A couple of other things, uh, due to a town council policy directive, uh, road maintenance is something that we are addressing more frequently, and as such, the amount that we budgeted for in this fiscal year, uh, hasn't been, is not going to be sufficient for us to carry through the, the end of the year, so what I'm asking, uh, for the town council to consider is to authorize a budget amendment in the amount of $75,000 to carry us through the end of this fiscal year, to cover, uh, the rest of the anticipated maintenance that we have for potholes and things like that. So I would ask for a mo- a motion, but before I do that, we also have, um, in a similar vein, a request to have a, a budget amendment for additional sign, uh, street sign maintenance in the amount of $10,000 to replace the street signs, the stop signs, and the, you know, the other signs that get knocked down from time to time. So if I could get a motion to... Yes, I was gonna suggest, I was gonna say that, we will be bringing the, thank you, Keith, for clarifying, we will be bringing that back in the form of a resolution to formalize those two change orders. Uh, there'll be two separate ones, one for the road maintenance and one for the, uh, street sign maintenance, those will come back, uh, at the July 24th meeting.
So do you need a motion or just like a consensus to go ahead with that resolution?
I'd like a motion because we'd like to go ahead and actually cut the purchase orders tomorrow if possible, or Monday, so this way we can have the contractors be ready and, and willing to, uh, to...
I'll make a motion that we...
Second.
Go for both of them.
Okay. Alright, so we have a motion and a second.
For legal purposes, we need to state where the funds are coming from.
Thank you.
They will be coming from un- un- unassigned fund balance, excuse me.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Could you repeat what the, what we're voting on?
Yes, this will be, uh, change orders essentially, uh, budget amendment, I'm sorry, a budget amendment of $75,000 for road maintenance and an additional one for $10,000 for, uh, street sign maintenance, and again, we will bring back the formal resolutions at the July 24th meeting, and the funding will come from unassigned fund balance.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, is there any, uh, just further discussion on this item? Is there any public discussion on the item? Seeing none, if we please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, a few other items, earlier this week, Emile and I met with, uh, Barbara Herrera of Waste Management to discuss the true-up that we are required to do contractually and the CPI. I'm happy to report that the net true-up this year will actually result in a reimbursement to the town of, of, uh, $4,443.07. The reimbursement is actually based on two factors, one is, um, a reduction in the true-up figure that they would have presented to us this year from $21,000 last year to $5,000, so that shows that we're getting closer and closer to the numbers, we're based on assumptions. Uh, but also in looking at the data a little bit more closely, Waste Management, to their credit, uh, discovered that they had actually overpilled us a little bit last year for the true-up amount, so we had overpaid by $10,000, um, so what they're doing is basically taking the $10,000, taking out the true-up amount of $5,000, and remitting us a check for the difference, which is $4,000. So 400, $4,000 for the record, $4,443.07.
Great.
So I just wanted to report that.
Thank you.
And additionally, uh, just...
Now, on that, I, I, with those true-up numbers, I think there's some other good news in there as well, as opposed, as far as, uh, recycling that are, are you gonna go into that?
Yeah, I was gonna talk about it.
Alright, go for it.
Yeah, so...
You're stealing all the good stuff, aren't you?
You guys are stealing my thunder. The current rates, the other good part is that the current rates, um, will only be adjusted by the CPI of, uh, five, uh, 5.24%, and what we looked at in the data, what we discovered was that, um, basically there was an increase. Looking at the tonnages, there's a reduction in solid waste disposal tonnages and an increase in recyclables processing, uh, tonnages, so that tells us that we're trending in the right direction, more people are recycling, so, good job.
It's a lot of hard work by a lot of people in the community.
Yeah, good job by the residents, so keep it up, uh, and, and keep up the messaging, Mayor and Council, so, kudos to you guys. Uh, also, we spoke about the exploration of future, uh, service options, uh, in the wake of the SWA Master Plan, and there, you know, kind of what came out in that master plan was that cities need to look at, at the very least, the low-hanging fruit, such as diverting, uh, vegetative waste from this, uh, from the solid, from the landfill stream. So we, when we had the opportunity to speak to Barbara, we wanted to look at, you know, what would that look like for the town if we wanted to divert more vegetative waste? Because as many people know, or maybe you don't know, when you put out bulk and you put out palm fronds and tree limbs along with bulky waste items, I'll call it, such as couches and refrigerators, they all go to the landfill. So what the suggestion from the Solid Waste Authority is, is to basically separate out the vegetative waste from those bulky waste items, and then you'll be able to divert all that vegetative waste from the landfills. So we are talking about that, or we're talking about that with, uh, our representative from Waste Management, and I've asked her to basically come back with some options that we can discuss and, and consider with the town council, and what I would like to suggest is that we have a workshop in the future when we get those options, so we can discuss, I don't wanna get into too many options right now because it's too nebulous at this point, but I think it'd be a good idea for us to discuss them at a workshop.
Yeah, no, I think that's, I'm super excited about, uh, this potential, actually thought we were gonna have to put this off for the next contract round, so this is exciting that we'll be able to do it prior to that, or at least explore it, hopefully get it done. Um, the only thing I would add to it is that if we do this, we've gotta set aside some money for education, cuz it's gonna be changing habits for 8,000 people, so we wanna make sure get, we get the word out there.
100%.
Yep.
I think, uh, Councilmember Kozinski has a question.
Yeah, go ahead, David.
I got a question for Russell. Did, um, Barbara give any explanation of why the $10,000 was overcharged last year?
Yes, uh, so what happened was, they, they have, uh, load tickets and things like that that they, uh, look at, and unfortunately, some of the trucks that were calculated or included in the calculation were commercial, uh, collections, and there were also for, uh, some invoices included that were from, uh, roll-off containers that are, that are sent out to businesses, stuff like that. So what she also showed us was a way, first of all, they're gonna obviously take a closer look at that in the future to make sure that doesn't happen again, but she also explained to Emile and I, who, um, how to look out for that in, in, in the future, so we'll know based on the reports what to look for, and it's pretty, pretty easy to identify based on truck numbers.
I really, I really appreciate that, uh, cuz I'm, gotta keep protecting our money. Thanks.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up. I, I think it says a lot about WM...
It does.
That they, they caught this, we would never have known it, and they brought it to our attention. So they've been great partners in so many ways that, uh, it's, it's very much appreciated.
Absolutely. Yeah, this was caught as part of the true-up, and they do their own internal audit, and that's where they caught it, so I appreciate the fact that they were forthcoming and let us know that, so. And then lastly, I just wanna take this one final swan song opportunity to thank, uh, Susan for all her efforts with the, with the birthday party. Um, she's heard it, she's heard it over and over, but you can't hear something like that enough when you got somebody who took so much on and did so much for the town and really reflected, you know, it, it really put the town in a, in a great light, I thought. I think you can hear from Susan's words when she thanked everybody how genuine, um, she feels about the town, I think that's reflected in, you know, all of the employees, I'm proud to lead this organization, um, we do have, you know, we're a family, we have our arguments, we have our little, you know, conflicts from time to time, but I think everybody understands that when there's an initiative that's so important to this town, everybody rallies, everybody gets together, and we really try to move things forward, so I'm really proud of her efforts, and I'm proud of the town's efforts, all of the staff, everybody, the residents, you know, everybody that was having a part of this, so, so thank you all, thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Russell.
Mayor, real quick, if I could, I'd just like to apologize, 4th of July, you don't need a permit, I know everybody wishes that you did need a permit, but the 4th of July is one of those holidays from the state that says that you can shoot off just about anything you wanna shoot off, but be respectful of your neighbors and stuff. Like I said, I know most of you wish we did have a permit, but 4th of July, if I got that, New Year's and a couple other, you don't, so, you know, just be respectful.
Thank you, Jim. Item number 10.
Item number 10 is an ordinance on second reading. It's an ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, Article 95, outdoor lighting standards, by adding and modifying definitions, modifying lighting intensity standards, establishing prohibited lighting practices, and providing for compliance, amending Article 70, sign regulations, section General sign requirements for permanent signs.
Um, there's a problem with that.
That's the problem with that.
Yeah. Yeah, it looks like a mix between the two. Um, what do we wanna do with this, Keith?
We're on item 11, uh, correct? 10?
We're on 10, yeah.
Sorry, I'm...
Looks like it's a combination of...
Well, read it from the actual ordinance itself, is that where the issue is?
Yeah, it's wrong on the ordinance itself.
Where, where is the title off?
Uh... About halfway down, it goes into, uh, signs.
Yeah, it goes into this, well, so sign illumination, so that may be, I think it...
No, that's, that's...
That's okay.
Okay.
Is it a problem?
Nope.
That's correct, yeah, 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 so it just looked weird cuz we were also doing the sign ordinance, but yeah, I think we're okay.
Are we to reread it?
Yeah, let's start from the beginning. It was so much fun, let's do it again.
Okay. This is an ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, Article 95, outdoor lighting standards, by adding and modifying definitions, modifying lighting intensity standards, establishing prohibited lighting practices, and providing for compliance, amending Article 70, sign regulations, section 070, 070. General sign requirements for permanent signs pertaining to sign illumination, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for ineffective...
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, this is on second reading, this is the final reading.
Yes.
Um, is there any comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, please call the roll.
I'm, I keep hesitating because there's one piece in this I don't care for. I've had conversations with Jeff during the week on it.
Mm-hmm.
Motion sensor lights serve a big purpose, I've got them all around my house, most of my neighbors do as well.
Sure.
And we're limiting the duration of them going on to one minute. Now, I thought my lights were two minutes for the shortest duration, mine has a switch on it, doesn't have something to rotate it to extend it. And mine are actually fine, according to the ordinance, they, they, the minimum is, is, uh, one minute. But what bothers me about limiting it to one minute is, when my motion sensors go on, it's either somebody's outside, or it's a critter, you name the critter, we all have them. And when the light goes on, it gets my attention, and, you know, I don't have a, unless we expect somebody, I really don't expect people, but I'm still looking for what the critter is. If it were limited to one minute, I don't think I could make it across my house fast enough to see what it was, I just think that's too short. Um, I really think two minutes is probably a reasonable compromise on that, because, again, anybody, my house isn't even that big, if, if somebody really cares about what's in their yard by the time they get there, unless it's a person, their, their, the light will probably be out by then. So that's one, I'd, one piece of this, and the only piece of it I'd like to see changed.
Yeah.
So I'd make a motion to change that to, uh, two minutes instead of one minute.
Um, so who, who made the motion in the second? You made the motion? Are you...
I, I would accept that, but, um, do you think two minutes is enough?
Uh, I think it, I, I could say five, but I'd know what our intent is, we wanna minimize the amount of time the lights, because they're, they're not subjected to elevations and all the rest, so to me, that's a reasonable compromise.
Okay, I mean, if...
I'll walk fast.
If that's what, if that's the, um, timeframe that you're happy, I'll be happy with it, I, I would just think it may be a little bit more, but...
I'm comfortable with it.
Alright.
So...
I'll amend my motion.
Hold on a second, Jim. Are you, this is, you seconded it?
Yeah.
Gary, are you okay with it?
I, I just wanna state for the record, what, what the motion is, is modification of section 095-030 subsection C, which started out at five minutes, the first reading had changed the five minutes to one minute, and now we're increasing that to two minutes.
Two minutes, okay.
So I just want the record to be clear on that.
Thank you, Keith. Any other comments from Council? Yeah, Jim?
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got that situation going on in my place.
If you just state your name.
Alright, Jim Laskey, 5760, Southwest 188th Avenue, alright, I got that situation going for 300 feet on my property, you blink, or the, uh, forget what they call them, those nuisance bushes that grow up, well, this person's got these bushes growing up in a, um, uh, drainage easement, okay? this person's got these bushes growing up in a drainage easement, okay? And then on my side of the, of the situation where it faces my fence on my border, all right, you've got these security lights, so I don't even know how it benefits the person that owns the house, but she put them up on the property line so they look directly over my fence, or at least the arc does of the, of the view, it's probably 90 degrees, they focus on my property, goes into my property about 25 feet and they, they can go off just by the bushes blowing in the wind, forgetting, and if I go back there, it does. I don't particularly need that light to go, if I, I need a light to go in my backyard, use a flashlight or no light at all. A lot of times we've got enough moon or starlight, you don't, you know, if you're used to doing it, it's no problem. But it's really annoying that I have my back property lit up by security lights for a person that probably should be in jail. That's another subject. But it's in a drainage easement, a recorded drainage easement, you've got a whole hedge in there, Rodley and Julio, I believe, both know about it, but everything's been probably hinging on what you're talking about tonight. So if you look at it that way and the duration is longer than a minute or two, I don't know how long you can set those things, but when you start counting in the bushes setting them off, it really is bad news, so please discuss this more.
Thank you Jim. Yeah, I do think that I wouldn't be comfortable with anything more than two minutes, just because as Jim just said, it can, it can, it may not be an actual person or animal, it may just be the wind blowing thing, so, yeah, go ahead Noel, sorry.
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. What the comprehensive plan said was a total of five minutes from the time it goes on. If you have it set for two minutes, it's from the last time the sensor detects movement, it'll stay on for an additional two minutes after that. That's why we had this long back and forth conversation. So if you have somebody or something out there walking back and forth, say a turtle, walking across your field of view and it triggers your light, it's going to be on the entire time the turtle is walking down your driveway and then for a length of time after that where the turtle quietly leaves. So that's, that's the most absurd one we used in the comp plan when we were talking about it. So got to remember, it's going to be the time after it, the last sensor rush happens. So whether it's one minute, two minutes, five minutes, whatever, what we were talking about is five minutes total.
Total.
Thank you.
Thanks Noel. I do think there's an element of this that we need to keep in mind and that's enforcement.
Right.
And this is one of those ones where it's almost more of a courtesy because unless, unless you happen to go out there and it's going on, the turtle, and you can see it going on and then you go out there and you can video it for the next 10 minutes or so, it's going to be very difficult, you know, the next day, if you say, hey, this is what happened last night, code enforcement will be, or code compliance will be very appreciative of knowing it, but there's not going to be a whole lot they can do at that point, you know, because it's, now it's daytime and that's not happening anymore, so. I'm comfortable with the two minutes, I think I understand what the, what the board was talking about, but let's see where this goes.
Good.
All right, closed public comment, any final comment from the council?
This was another big one for the comp plan board, and Jeff Cadens as well, there was a lot of time put in this, our dark skies ordinance and our lighting is not a simple task.
It's not at all, it's not at all, and it's, you have to, and that's the point, is you have to look at, there's two elements, what it is you want to do and what is it going to force.
Right.
It's two elements, so.
And Mr. Mayor, I want to thank Manfred, because Manfred said, David, why don't you take a ride with me one night on dark skies? And he clued me in that this needed to be amended.
Good.
So I want to thank Manfred.
Thank you Manfred.
Mayor, if I may, just so, so it's clear to the general public and myself, the two minutes that it's on, when it goes out, the clock starts over again.
The clock starts over, yeah.
Right, because that's usually what happens with these motion sensor lights, is cat goes one way and then comes back the other way.
Yeah.
You know, and so it can.
Yeah, and to me, and to me, that's, that's all about enforcement, because that, you can go back the next day and you can say, hey, what's the timing on this, it's three minutes, well, that's not allowable, you have to turn that, shut it, you know, bring it back to two minutes.
Dial it down.
Yeah, yeah, dial it down. All right, let's call the roll please.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, the next two ordinances are on first reading, item number 11 please.
Forgive me.
Yep.
Item number 11 is an ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending Section 070110 of the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code pertaining to non-commercial signage, providing for conflict, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on this item. Is there any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to go back on the record again that I oppose any proactive on this issue. I did mention my preference on the date to put up and that was not seconded, so I'll live with that decision, but the proactive is really crucial to me.
Yep, looking forward to that coming back as well, and thanks for bringing that up David.
Good. I do have a question, and this is more of a general question than specifically on this ordinance. So we passed companion ordinances during the LPA earlier. If we make a modification here, does it automatically transfer to the LPA rulings we made earlier or do they have to be changed again?
The LPA is solely a recommendation to the council.
Got it.
So this is final. The irony is, I've stated this in the past, is a lot of things, not this particular item, but a lot of things in the council requires five votes of the council, so technically an item could pass in LPA 32 and then still fail at the council.
Got it, thank you Keith. We don't change them very often, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's a good point. All right, any other council comment? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, if we can please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great, item number 12 please.
Item 12 is an ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, Article 35, Conditional Uses, Section 05035080, indoor and outdoors assembly in rural and agricultural districts, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion from the council on this item?
Mayor, I just want to acknowledge Michael Spitzer's help in helping us to redraft this, he was one of the main.
Right.
Impetus behind realizing there was an issue with the current code. This may not be perfect, it may need to be tweaked and refined further, but I really do want to thank him for spending so much time with me.
Yeah.
And helping to draft this.
Yeah, great point Keith, thank you for bringing that out. Thank you Michael.
We'll know within two years whether we made the right decisions here. It seems that often we talk about it.
Yeah, yeah, I don't expect this to be the final, I think we're on a journey with this ordinance and we've taken a step in the right direction, but there's probably some more steps to go.